Okay, I just want to welcome everybody. We're going to go ahead and get started, so if we could at least stand and do the pro- pro- presentation of the flag, that'd be great.
... What they choose to imply of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every community justice for all.
Okay, I appreciate it. So Cassandra, you and Reza want to come on up? And we'll go ahead and get started on our work session and go ahead and...
Okay, that'd be great, thanks.
How are you guys doing? So you want to go ahead and sort of, you want to go ahead Cassandra and Reza to go ahead and kind of recap a little bit, so everybody understands kind of what we want to achieve tonight with, you know, getting the, the county has been given, you know, three point three million dollars and what we want to try to, you know, distribute to that throughout the county.
That's right.
And, you know, we've started off with a list and we, the committee did a great job putting that list together and we're going to, we're going to put some tweaks to it and, and hear some people that might be interested in, you know, getting in and getting some money too, so we want to sort of listen to everybody. So at that point, if you want to go ahead and get us started, that would be great.
I'll kick it off.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan and council members, and thank you to those joining us from afar. So we're here to talk about the Rural Economic Development Fund that was funded by the governor's office in his budget, fifty million dollars for rural counties distributed in the regional councils. We are part of the Midshore Regional Council along with Caroline and Dorchester. The Midshore Regional Council elected to disperse the money to the counties or to give counties the opportunity to apply for up to three point two, three three, three 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 million dollars of that money. They've set aside some for administration and then the rest of it will be dispersed to county projects. We opened it up to an egalitarian process, accepted applications from towns, we submitted some of our own, and nonprofits were also eligible. Again, this money is for economic development, primarily infrastructure that supports economic development or other workforce or business retention or attraction efforts. And so we put together a committee from the Economic Development Commission to accept the applications, review the applications, and then make recommendations to the council. We presented those recommendations on Tuesday night and those, again, were the recommendations of a ten-person committee of the Economic Development Commission that you appoint to advise you on economic matters.
Right.
I'm going to toss it to Reza to recap anything I may have missed.
Thank you Cassandra. Good evening, members of the council, Mr. Stamp. The, a couple of two points or three points that I would like to add to what Cassandra covered very thoroughly. One is the expansion of the purpose of this fund. It has to be focused on three or four very, very specific areas that the governor wants us to focus on: economic development, workforce development, infrastructure, entrepreneurship, and innovation. And also there is a time limit attached to it. The projects that are being proposed to be accomplished through the funding that is available has to be completed within eighteen to twen- twenty-four months of the funding. So that somehow creates the framework and the template. But based on that framework and the template, Cassandra and the commission created the, an application that was pretty much approved and dictated by the Department of Commerce, who's going to be the grantor of the fund. We passed on that application to everybody who is interested in funding and based on that application, the evaluation sheet was created, that every member of the committee had to take the evaluation form, take a look at all the twenty-eight applications, and then being able to rate and make the recommendations. So based on those processes that Cassandra explained very well, we went through the process during the past two months or so, coming up with the recommendation that we made to members of the council on Tuesday night.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Man, just one last thing.
Absolutely.
It was twenty-three applications, just for clarity. And also, we've been instructed to submit a ranked list, thank you Parker, a ranked list to the Midshore Regional Council by tomorrow.
Right.
And we are, we are also instructed to submit additional projects in case some of the ones we submit don't quali- don't qualify.
Right.
Or we can make a recommendation, you know, that we, instead of, if the money falls through for somebody else, we can fund these projects.
I see, I see.
We can add additional projects, but they must be submitted in ranked order.
I see.
And may I just...
Yeah, absolutely.
...the rest of the process, if I may, Mr. President?
Yes.
And that is, you carry two hats, so to speak, you carry two roles. One, of course, you're the president of the Talbot County Council, you're also the chairman of the Midshore Regional Council as well too. Based on your decision, that was the, the fund that Cassandra mentioned divided into three counties.
Yes, sir.
Came to us.
Yes.
And by the same token, now this is going to be, it came from top to down, now it's going to be rolled up from the, to the same rest of the process.
Yes, sir.
So this decision is going to come to that council.
Correct.
And then it goes to the Commerce from there.
Yep, yep, well, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Just one more thing on my shoulders, you know? That's good.
So your job tonight, Mr. Chairman and members of the council, is to be Solomon and not cut the baby in two.
Exactly. Well, that's what we're going to do. That's what we're doing, okay. Yeah. Go back. Okay. Okay, all right. Can you guys hear me pretty good now? Is that a little bit better?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, okay. So, all right, so what I'm thinking is, do we, since you put in order...
They're in order.
They're in order?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now?
Yes, the way that we would submit them. And they were ranked by the committee and they are the order.
Okay, so...
So you can change that order, you can change the amount of money.
Okay.
You can add to, however you wish.
So, so, so maybe what we want to go through, and I'm, I'm just, you know, thinking about this last couple nights, you got the project one at Chesapeake College.
Yes.
Okay, so maybe, maybe one of the best things we could try to do is, is council on board, is the committee, the committee, let's go through what the committee suggested. They ranked this number one.
Yes.
Okay, so with Chesapeake College, does the council, do we have any input on that?
Well, let me, let me just start by saying, the first two, the Chesapeake College Future Work- Workforce Training Program and the Maryland Broadband Cooperative, Midshore Optical Broadband Network Upgrade, those projects, as I understand them, are both multi-jurisdictional.
Yes, so...
And so we, we're being asked for just a Talbot County share of that multi-jurisdictional...
Correct.
The total cost.
So for Chesapeake College, they asked the same thing of five different counties and those are the five counties they serve. And then Maryland Broadband asked the same thing from the three counties where they have the point of presence. And then ours is NY Mill, the one that's in Talbot County that serves us.
Well, you know, I, I think that we shouldn't let our, one, one, these are clearly important economic development and workforce training, they meet the criteria, and we shouldn't let our colleagues in other counties down by, by not doing our part on those, so I would, I would leave those intact and ranked as they are.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about the ranking, okay? So let's get through, let's get through the, the list and then we'll do the ranking.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay.
So let's go to...
And I'll, I'll agree with Mr. Leshar, I have no problem, I think those are great projects and showing how the counties are cooperating together, I think that's, that's great. So I'm, I'm good with Chesapeake College and Maryland Broadband Cooperative.
Okay, great, that's great, okay. So project number three, we've got the Avalon Foundation, okay?
Yes, and that's for the Stoltz Pavilion, to make that a permanent structure in downtown Easton.
Okay.
So I'll say on this one, that tourism development is economic development. This is increasing the capacity, the infrastructure for this particular organization to serve its community and, and increases its capacity to, to host events and to, and to bring people into Talbot County for these events. And looking at this application, I think that, that it has sounded, I appreciate the recommendation and fully support it.
Well, this is one of the recommendations that I do not agree with. And I went back and read through most of them, most of, most of the applications today. And although I have been a big supporter of the Avalon over the years, when I look at the other, some of the other applications on our list, this one, to me, did not rise to the level as some of the others, in particularly when we look at the Trap Waste Water Treatment Plant, which also had a request for five hundred thousand dollars. Yes, entertainment is important, yes, the Avalon does generate revenue as far as people coming into the town of Easton and coming into Talbot County. But when I ranked it, ranked it up against the opportunity to assist a neighboring or a, an established town entity within our borders, which, you know, we've had conversations about the wastewater treatment facility serving the town of Trap, I felt that we were missing a prime opportunity to help out with that, that town and their efforts to upgrade that system, which has been a source of much conversation over the, over the last several, several months, which I don't want to go back into yet again. I know we do have, and this was one of the applications that I did ask Reza about on, on Tuesday. I also reached out to representatives of the town on the Trap to get more clarity on exactly what the request would do. And I know we do have representatives here that can speak to that. And to my understanding, after speaking with them, the funds could certainly be spent into the twenty-four month period as it would be for sludge removal of their holding facility. And I know that we have representat- representation, representatives from the town of Trap here. Mr. Callahan, I will ask that they have an opportunity to speak on their application to bring some more clarity as to what the request is for. But again, the Avalon Foundation and the activities that it performs are certainly noted and are certainly one that, you know, we should always encourage, but when we have an opportunity to assist with the infrastructure and one of the first things it talks about when you, when you read the description and purpose, it talks about infrastructure, you know? So I think this opportunity is one that we shouldn't miss.
Okay. So I would, go ahead.
I sort of had somewhat similar thinking and I want to really acknowledge that I listened to the meeting Tuesday, I spoke with Reza and Cassandra on that day, and I've spoken to many of these organizations since then regularly. With a couple of things that I heard that resonated with me, and speaking with Cassandra, it sounded like there was a little bit of similar discussion with the board. And it was amazing, between the bankers and the Chamber of Commerce, and that there's a lot of different diversified individuals who reviewed these applications. And I'm still trying to build just a couple of promises that I've had since my campaign. And when I look at, and one thing that I have heard in the meeting is that we want to make sure that we're serving all of the needs of Talbot County. I love the Avalon, I, I think the new Stoltz Pavilion could be out there, I played some like the, the amphitheater in Charlotte, they have you though, which is awesome, it's an excellent spot, it's down in a hole, but it's not going to drown. But as far as, when I'm looking at the economic development for Talbot County, I really want to have the best fiber in our business parks, I want to have the best roads so that you can get into the business parks. And I want to also focus that we, for twenty-some years, we've been planning on the development coming to Trap because there's other things in Trap that I still need to, and need to improve, you know? When I asked for a breakdown and I got, there are thirty-two acres of commercial space in the town of Trap, twenty-two acres of industrial space, thirteen public acres, seven semi-public, and twelve-hundred-and-eighty-eight vacant acres that can still be developed. And when you look at that, this wastewater treatment facility, their houses are going to come, but they're also going to need jobs for those individuals, as well as Talbot County begging for jobs. Moving the half million from the Avalon, which I love and I hate to do, but this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to give it to Trap, to help them improve their facility, they've got three different projects they can readily immediately use on, clean the sludge off of the sludge ponds, that's a two-million-dollar project, they've got some money, significant money in the bank already for them. I feel that it would be a little bit better way to spread the money around the community by, and I know I'm kind of stepping ahead a little bit, but focusing on the next step, the fiber option, to, to give Easton that money there for that, because then you're going to have business in this part, with internet, you got to have internet for businesses to come, the best way. But I would be willing to move the five hundred from the Avalon to the town of Trap. And again, you know, and I even spoke with Scott Warner about this, my biggest concern was, what did he think? And he said that he had talked to neighboring counties that wanted to do broadband, which is sort of a similar thing, and they said, you know, please give us the farmers, what if we hook up all the other councils along the way? And they said, no, you can't do that. I don't see this as the same thing. We're not putting, we're not upgrading that plant just for the neighborhood, we're upgrading that plant for the town of Trap, which has plenty of development potential that it will need and will use as the individuals come to live there.
And if I'm, and I know we have Lindsay here too, if she wouldn't mind coming forward, but I, I know also...
Or get a little closer to your...
Get a little bit closer to my mic, you know, I hate to...
And also you need to project your voice.
You're hitting that.
You're trying to hit the hour.
I have to hit the hour?
Yeah.
Oh, golly dang. You guys got me after...
Yep.
Okay, let's, let me try this again. So I agree with you, Mr. Davilio, I, I, again, as much as I love the Avalon and my wife and I have attended many, many shows there and gone to many events there, I think moving this five hundred thousand dollars over to the town of Trap would be better served holistically. And not only that, if you, if you read in the application, they also talk about the Ferry Point development, which this council has supported, which we have legislation to hook up the commercial properties in Ferry Point. So this gets us another leg of the way into making that a reality. Not only is it a gesture of goodwill and working with an incorporated town in the county, but it also serves all of the other descriptions and purposes outlined in the application. So I'm, I am in favor of moving the five hundred thousand dollars from the Avalon and awarding the town of Trap the five hundred thousand, thousand dollars for the upgrade of their wastewater treatment plant.
Go ahead, Ms. Price.
I don't want to make this a trade right here, because I'm not sure we're going to come out in this list, so I think we can continue the conversation on, on Trap, because there was some things that we heard about them not meeting that timeline and the, the lake side's not going to connect to that other than temporary measures, so that's not really what's at issue. But I was a little concerned, I'll come back to this piece of it, that this is a long timeline, it has to be used within two years. So we would want to make sure, like what Frank said, some of those other projects that you said they could use their money for right now are things that are allowed under this particular grant. So, you know, we might get to a final thing, they put it on the list and not know they got. But with the Avalon, I think five hundred is too big. I'm not saying to necessarily cut it completely, but to get, I think we can make some room here. And there's some other projects, and there's some other projects that are just so tiny, like thirteen and twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars, then I think that we should include, we'll get to those. So I think for at least reducing the Avalon, I think it's too big of a chunk. So I think right now you have, you know, at least agree, who you're going to eliminate or reduce the Avalon's amount.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Price, cut...
So, so can I, can I, can I, can I go this route so we kind of get through the list?
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to go through this list.
I do understand, but just on the matter of the timeline that Mrs. Price brought up, and it was brought up again, again on Tuesday by Reza, if we could ask maybe Nick Noonan, President of Talbot Trap Council, maybe Lindsay to step forward and speak to that timeline, because I do believe we can put that question to answer very, very quickly. I know they do have additional ARPA funds that will go along with our five hundred thousand dollars that would get them more than halfway to where they need to be. So would either one of you wish to come up and to speak to the...
I'd like, I understand that, but I want to go through this list because then we're going to have a bucket of money.
Yeah, I know, I, I do understand, I appreciate...
And we might, there might be more or less.
I appreciate that. I'm just asking to address the question of the timeline, if we can put that question to rest.
Okay, yeah, could you address the timelines then, Lindsay? That'd be great, no problem.
Absolutely. I can probably yell out enough that everyone can care, but I'll sit there for you guys. Related to the timeline, so while the ENR upgrade has a timeline of five years till when it will be actually be functioning, the town will be connected to it, there are components of the ENR upgrade that the town could do tomorrow if they had funds.
I see.
One of them is related to the sludge lagoons that Councilmember Pack mentioned, the sludge lagoons have to be completely, the sludge in them has to all be removed. That is something that MDE actually told us today that is not eligible for their funding because, for whatever reason, it doesn't meet those guidelines.
Right.
But it's something that is necessary for the ENR upgrade.
Right.
In addition, there are two pump stations that have already been designed, we're just waiting on funding for. Both of those pump stations submit the effluent into the wastewater treatment plant and those both need to be upgraded. The total cost for those two is about six hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
For the sludge project, the, the town has a capital reserve of about eight hundred and sixty thousand in a sewer fund, ready for a project. In addition, they have nine hundred and forty thousand dollars in ARPA funds that they could certainly use for that project.
Right.
So it is something that they could, if they were given this money, have the ability to spend it on something related to the sewer plant within two years.
Okay, great, that's great.
That question's been addressed, okay.
But we have guidelines what we can spend this on, so if, I understand, it's what money was spent, but is it economic development? That's the question that we have to just pass back to Reza and Cassandra.
Right.
It's not that we don't agree that you guys could use some help with the money, but if it's not allowed under the guidelines of this program, then we can't do it. That's the question that I need answered.
Absolutely, and, and I'm sorry, I didn't realize, Councilmember Price, that you weren't going to be here this evening. I, I can email you a map, but I have copies for the council here. I did print out copies of a map from the Town of Trap's comprehensive plan and with on it you can see a highway corridor. There are two maps, that shows the corridor and then here you can see all the vacant parcels that are in Trap. A lot of those are commercial or industrial parcels that are vacant, I think Councilmember Davilio gave the actual acreage of those. But through their comprehensive plan, the Town of Trap supports commercial and industrial development there, which would go towards economic development, it would create jobs, it could create private investment.
Great, I mean, we want to clean up water and all that, that's right, but is it economic development? That's my question to Cassandra and Reza, I'm not opposed, but if it doesn't fit the criteria, you mean, how that question...
Well, I think...
That's not fitting any of my answers.
Ms. Price, I think the question's already answered in the outline of the application and it says eligible users include development of public infrastructure, such as utilities, transportation, broadband, to support the attraction, retention, and expansion of businesses as well as infrastructure projects related to specific industries and sectors, but not limited to, manufacturing, clean energy, life sciences, cybersecurity, agribusiness. So it, it definitely, the eligibility already speaks to infrastructure, which an upgrade in wastewater treatment plant certainly falls within that.
And I would also add, in addition to just the infrastructure piece, by upgrading to ENR, it will support economic development within the Town of Trap by connecting to Ferry Point, there's a long-term commercial plan in that area.
Absolutely.
There's the highway corridor, corridor commercial plan within the Town of Trap. So not only is it for the infrastructure, but it also supports commercial development, which goes to the purpose of the funds.
Ferry Point, which is one that we all support, I believe, so...
So keep going through the list, is there rank and put a pin in what amount we might want to...
Well, I, I, like I said, we've heard that we're going to be changing this line item number three, okay? We're going to be changing that, so let's work down to number four, okay? Go ahead, Mr. Leshar.
So, yeah, just a follow-up question to this, you know, I, I believe that, that the parcels that are currently incorporated into Trap are eligible for sewer service today, and you have the capacity for them today, and granted, we, we want the ENR, ENR The Ferry Point at least is ineligible to be, or at least is ineligible to, to be state, to get, obtain any state funding to connect without the ENR upgrade. We know that can't happen within, in the two years, however, if we facilitate the ENR upgrade in some way, shape, or form through this, does that provide us an assurance that when the time comes that Ferry Point can in fact? It, it, the, the language in the, in the application is permissive, this would allow, but, but will, if Ferry, if, if this, if this is desired by a future county council in order to facilitate business expansion at Ferry Point, there's your, is, is, does Trap have language here that commits it to that connection and to allocating its, its capacity in this way?
I wouldn't say that the application requires the connection, but I will say, and I think Councilmember Pack can support this, is that anytime the Town of Trap has been approached with that scenario and that idea, they have been supportive of it and they've even reached out to the county council wanting to pursue that option. The only reason it hasn't happened is again, because they can't access the funding to BRF money. So I certainly think they are in support of it.
And, and I will say, in my conversation with President Noonan and other members of the Town of Trap, going back months back now, is that they have been supportive of the idea of connecting the Ferry Point properties to their wastewater treatment plant. This is step one of a multi-step process. You first have to get the plant upgrade to an ENR status before you can then go and bring those other properties onboard. So this is step one, if you will.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, so let's, let's take, let's take that line item there and, and put it aside, okay? Let's move on to the Town of Easton, okay? So Town of Easton...
They're requesting one million dollars for burying the power lines.
One million or five hundred?
Well, this is our recommendation, they requested one million, we recommended five hundred and one, seven hundred, seven hundred dollars.
Okay, okay, I apologize.
That was the committee recommendation.
Okay.
Just over half of their, and it was to bower, bury the power lines between Joe White and the point.
Correct, correct, okay, so...
This, this is the one that I mentioned on Tuesday night, that to me is, is very paralyzed, it's not, you know, in fact, or, or, you know, or development or projects, you know, it's not really going to happen in the next couple of years that I, that I can foresee. I do believe that with the large sum of ARPA money that they got, that again, it's way too big an amount. I, I would take, I would take this one away, I don't know whether the council members are, but certainly we have other projects that we're talking about here, and I think that they do have a funding source for this, and it's just, I, I just cannot get past the fact that burying power lines does not have the same impact as almost any of these other projects that are, that are on this, that are on this list. So I, this is one I just, I'm sorry, I can't be supportive of.
Okay.
I would agree with, with Ms. Price, I would also be willing to strike this one with that nap, million dollars, I think the Town of Easton would be better served by having broadband out to the business parks. And I would divide up some of that, that five hundred thousand, maybe give two hundred thousand to that, and I can go through the others as we get to it, but I would, I would agree with, with Price that I would take this off at least at this time.
Okay, that, that sounds good, so, so do we want to go ahead and move, keep on moving?
Yeah, I can, I can offer my, my, also my support of shaving this down a bit.
Okay.
My, my idea was to break this in half, I spoke to on, on Tuesday, and I don't know whether Mr. Leshar needs to stay in and stay out.
Okay.
But I spoke to on Tuesday about funding the Maritime Resem, so I could, I could support maybe breaking this in half and giving, giving a portion to St. Michael's.
Okay, all right, so let's, let's move down to project number, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Leshar.
Just, just a note here, I, I realize that, that... Just, just a note here, I, I realize that, that, that moving an electric utility line underground, you know, Eastern Point has power now, this will provide the power, though underground power is both more attractive for a, a destination location, and, and it is also, it is also edge resilience. You know, underground lines fail less often. So there are, there are economic development dimensions of this that, that may not perhaps at first be recognized, and, and perhaps the, perhaps the partial funding of this could be, some portion of the partial funding could be preserved through this, through this process.
Utility infrastructure is economic development.
Great, okay.
Yeah, and I think they have other funding sources, and that, that, that's half where, why, why where I am, is because they got $14 million in ARPA money, and we got seven, and I don't know where it all went, necessarily where it all went, but again, there's, there's other, other projects, so we see we're really able to develop.
Okay, all right, the next is going to be project number five, that the committee come up with $400,000 for the Eastern Shore Entrepreneur Center, so.
That's for an ag biotech manufacturing project.
Okay.
And that would see their efforts to build an incubator for ag biotech here on the eastern shore.
Okay.
That is a partial funding recommendation, they asked for five.
Okay, they asked for five, they asked for four?
They asked for 500.
Oh, they asked for five, but we gave you four. I, I keep getting that wrong.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to be thorough.
I'm just making sure the numbers are right.
Okay.
I, I'm supportive of this project, and if there's, if there's funds left over at the end, maybe we can do the whole thing, but I am supportive of what the committee did, that was a, a really good ranking and funding for that, so I'm supportive of this.
Okay.
I, I support it as well. I took out of the 500,000 from the Eastern Point project, 100,000 to this, to give them the full funding that they had requested, out of Michael's project.
Okay, all right, we'll come back to that, that sounds great. Mr. DiVillo, anybody else want to speak? We keep moving on?
I'm good with this part.
Okay, you good? Okay, so that, that, that's in, okay, let's go to number six, which is the, the Tobit County Free Library.
Yes, this is, they were proposing a digital, digital literacy and employment skills program. We elected to fund the computer portion of this, the equipment portion, and I spoke with Dana, and $22,000 is the amount of money that they would need for that portion of this project.
That's great, that's great, is everybody on board with that?
I'm supportive.
Yes.
Okay.
I am, and let, let.
You better be.
Let, let me clarify that I am, I am the council's liaison to the library board. As such, I'm an ex officio and non-voting member of that board, and so I don't, you know.
Right.
That does not comprise a, a conflict of interest for me to, to act on this particular one.
No problem, no problem, okay, so, okay, we're good with that. Okay, let's move on, yep.
The Building African American Minds.
Yes.
Workforce Development Program.
You've got it.
They had asked for 148,000 and change. We asked them to winnow that down to the amount that they would need for the adult portion only. There was a youth component, and we didn't feel that this fund was for funding education. There are other sources of funding for that, and this is the amount, plus $1, because I needed to put that three somewhere. They asked for 187, 132, and so this is a partial funding recommendation for BAM.
Okay, is, is everybody got a good feeling and on board with BAM?
I support.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay, okay, let's move on to the next.
We have two.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not as clean as some of the other projects, because it's all based on, I'm okay with it.
Okay, okay, okay. Cassandra, next?
Yes, sir. This is for the Tobit County Department of Economic Development and Tourism. We've proposed, proposed an inclusive ventures program. It's a eight-week training program for minority women and veteran-owned businesses, small businesses, and this would fund the programmatic portion of that eight-week program for two cohorts, one in each of the years.
Okay.
We had asked for four cohorts, but this is, is, we all agreed that this is doable.
Okay, okay, is, is.
So would you be coming back to a future council to be able to grant 2,000, or you just wouldn't do it?
So we probably will be coming to the council for the grant funding, so this program, as it runs in other places, offers a $5,000 grant to the participants, and what we are hoping is that we would, this is a proof-of-concept type of a program. It works in Anarundel County, it works in Charles County, it works for Johns Hopkins, and so we want to see if it works in Tobit County. We had a lot of minority businesses that emerged in our grant program, and we now have connections with them that we did not have, and we think that this will help our small businesses succeed. So we also believe that it will be picked up by others, that we will be able to merge with other programs and that it will be funded by someone else. So I don't think we would come back for the 50, Laura.
Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead.
Just add just one quick point to it.
Yes, absolutely.
There's a potential, this is to Councilwoman Price, there's a potential for public-private partnership. So if we can start this process, that the public, the private sector can come in and to Councilwoman Price, they might be able to get the resources.
Yes, sir, okay, all right, so everybody's on board with that?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Mr. DiVillo.
Geographically wise, I'm kind of breaking these up, just thinking that way, this is not, this, you would, this is more of a county project, right? No one area is going to benefit more than another, very, like, there was.
Right.
Local facility, like, I guess even if it was, still county-wide, right?
Absolutely, we, we represent the entire county.
Yep, okay, all right.
And it would be open to any small business that's run by a minority woman or a veteran.
Okay.
Who do we have in support, I mean?
I think everybody's in support, yep.
Okay, everybody, thank you.
Okay, Cassandra, want to run to the next?
Yes, sir. This is the Tobit County Parks and Recreation Proposal for the Frederick Douglass Park on the Takahoe. This is for the pre-development engineering design and interpretive design for Phase Two. We have a master plan that lays out a complete Phase Two for extended trails for memorial space with a pavilion, bathrooms, Corey, hopefully. So this is, is the, our master plan shows that this is about the right amount of money for the engineering. We were hoping to build a bathroom and a pavilion, but, so our original request was $750,000. The committee felt that 300 was the right amount.
Okay, that sounds great. Any comments, everybody on board with this?
Mr. Thomas, if I sit on, as I, as I do sit on this Frederick Douglass Board, I probably should not weigh in on, on this.
You can certainly recuse yourself.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so, Mr.?
I want to force a rank board, and I, I am impressed with that.
Oh, you can weigh on in it, it might be, it, since you're on the board, you, you, I mean, yeah, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I'm in favor of it, and it's supporting Cordova, the idea of application from that area, which I think is valid.
And Queen Anne.
And Queen Anne.
Queen Anne, but don't forget them.
Well, both.
Okay, that's good. Okay, great, everybody's in support of that.
And, and again, economic, developing economic infrastructure is, is economic development. This, this is, falls into that same category.
Right, I agree, Mr. Lusher, okay, next, the 125,000 for Tobit County Development?
Yes, so this is for a strategic plan, and we would put out an RFP and hire a consultant to do a strategic plan. We're at the end of a five-year cycle on our current strategic plan, and this would enable us to hire a consultant to do a comprehensive look at post-COVID world and economic development.
Sure, okay, is everybody?
This is probably, if this is probably something you would put, ask for in the budget next year or so anyway, right? So this is a way to find it, it?
Yes, yes, that is correct.
Okay.
So, and you're comfortable that it, you know, it meets the correct criteria for the , you know, impact and development and all of that?
Yes.
Is it something that would probably be in our budget anyway?
Yes.
As a kind of trade and work together?
So I believe that the guidelines, I'd have to check to be sure, I believe they say that plans, planning is an eligible expense.
Economic development activities.
Or economic development. It is part of the economic development process.
It falls underneath the economic development activities part, so yes, it would, it would qualify.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, great, okay, great. You're good, you're good, okay, everybody supports that? Okay, so let's move on to Tobit Roads, Public Works for Roads on, in Goldsboro Neck Road.
So in my opinion, this is one of the most important projects on the list.
I would agree.
This is Tobit County Public Works. We have been working on Goldsboro Neck Road from Mistletoe Hall down to Glebe for a number of years now, and we only have a partial road. And we have additional funding from the Royal Maryland Prosperity Investment Fund to work on this end, and then they've got this culvert in the middle that needs to be replaced. Ray says he can do this in two years, and then that would complete that portion of the road from Mistletoe Hall down to.
Ray, Ray told you what?
Two years.
Okay.
And you're going to hold his feet to the fire.
I'll be back.
And that would take us from Mistletoe down to Glebe, and then, of course, you know, eventually, the plan would be to complete that road from Mistletoe to Airport, or up to Airport and Airport to Route 50, you know, which is a, you know, project of about 10 to 12 million dollars. So this completes that infrastructure for Mistletoe Hall to be able to accommodate heavy truck traffic.
Okay, all right, that sounds great.
And it falls underneath the transportation eligibility requirement, so I, I certainly support this, and, and that corridor is, is, serves a number of purposes, as, as you know, Ms. Callahan, is also a corridor for evacuations of, of the Bay Hundred area, and with the development of the business park, to bring those heavy trucks that Cassandra alluded to, in and out of that, that park, are you going to need a roadway substantial enough to handle the weight and, and not be a burden? The culvert there has been a problem, Ray was just in here Tuesday, I believe, and spoke to that, so it, it is eligible underneath the transportation clause of, of the applications, I certainly support it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pack. Any, any other council member want to speak on that? Okay, so we're, we're all good with that, okay, so now where we've landed, we've landed with, with the committee, there, looks like they're about 85%, okay? There are nine of them.
That's good.
Okay, that's, that's great. So what we need to do is kind of, let, let's get back into, we've got a million and one, a million bucks to sort of distribute to some causes that the council is, wants to talk about, so, so let's, let's get into a.
Can we do, can we do a real easy one first?
Yes.
Can we support the Oxford Community Center for only $13,000?
Yes.
Okay.
So Laura, here's my thought, here's my idea, and you guys double-check my hat.
Okay.
So that's at 501,700, if we take that, we do 200,000 to fiber optic and the eastern, the eastern utilities requesting for the business park. We do 100,000 for the full half of the entrepreneurship center. We do 13,000 to Oxford. That leaves us with 188,700.
Of, yeah, that, that group.
Of that group, and then, what I'm thinking is, I, I reached out to Ray, I would love to have gone to Tomen Island. The only thing we could do in Tomen Island, I think, is dredging the Narrows, that's a $5 million project, if we give him half a million, it's 1%, that's embarrassing, and it's, I could, I feel bad for Tomen Island, I wish we could do more than we can. That, remaining 188,700, I would give that to the Chesapeake Bay Mary's Island team. Then we're covering St. Michael's, Cordova, Easton, Oxford, if we move the 500 from the Avalon to Trap, then we're also covering Trap.
So I'm not, I'm not sure about giving that whole thing, so the other thing, the other one that I was agreeing with, that was of interest to me, was that, the, it wasn't the technician at Premiership Program, at the Classic Lower Museum, and I'd love to hear a little bit more about that, Cassandra, can you give us a little insight? Because that is something that, I mean, getting chuckle-eyed like that, kind of the boat tech side of, you know, people that, you know, get him.
Well, we, we got, we got the man, we got the man right here.
I was going to say, can do better than that.
We got the man right here, but I, I do want, I do want to go on one thing, okay? So it, does, does everybody agree that we want to give Oxford 13,000?
Could we, could we hear from the committee on this before we, about their consideration on this before we talk about that?
Sure, absolutely.
So what do you guys think of that proposal that Frank just kind of led?
Well, let's, let's, let's go one at a time, let's, let's go with, with Oxford.
The, the fund that Oxford is asking, it is for improvement, some of the, of the electronics and some of the audiovisual kind of equipment that they have, for the purpose of being able to kind of upgrade it and update it. Again, you can look at it, and you can stretch it, again, I'm going to, to, to Councilman lectures, again, trying to dissect it, make sure it is the economic development, again, as the Councilman Pex has, has well said. You, you can push it to the point that if, since this facility is available to public, and many organizations are coming and using the facility, it is not only dedicated to one particular group, that, that can be recognized and, and fitting the compliance and the criteria to push it forward.
Okay, okay.
So I will say, I invited them to apply and ensure that they got their application in, because after all of the presentations were made, they kind of didn't think it was eligible, but I said, you took the first step, you opened the door, now let's close it. So I'm supportive of this. The only thing from the committee on this was that there's $40 million worth of arts council funding this year in the governor's budget, and we felt that there would be another way, and I committed to Liza personally that I would help them find it. I know that they applied for an ARPA grant, as did the library, to cover the other portion of their, theirs, so, you know, I'm not opposed in any way to funding this, that's little money, do it, and let commerce kick it back if it's going to get kicked back.
Okay, okay, that's good, okay, so Frank, what was the next thing on your list?
So I had 200,000 to the fiber optic out to the business park, eastern utilities, really solid.
Okay, okay, so.
Yeah, it's the second project, Business Park High-Speed Internet Project.
Okay.
So can I ask a question about that one?
Yes.
So my question is, we have, and I'm not opposed, but we have given eastern utilities a ton of money, we gave them a lot of our ARPA money, and we all were very supportive of broadband, and we did that so that we could equalize, or so that people wouldn't have to pay that last mile with the connection right to their house. Will this all be perceived as just continuing, is that a problem? Because we have, you know, I'm not getting it out very well. We, we've been really supportive, and we've given them a lot of grant money, and are there other projects that we're going to not be supporting and giving eastern utilities to get more money? So that's the only reason I would put a pin in it, make sure that we've discussed everything. If there's money left, I'm all for it, but I just want to make sure that we're not leaving somebody out as we go through this discussion, and they might feel like, gosh, how many times has Tobit County Council given eastern utilities money? But I mean, it's different, it's not, you know, it's, it's high-speed and business development, which is different than, you know, residential goals, so I, I do too.
Okay, Reza?
Thank you, if I may, thank you, Mr. President. It, several pieces of this, again, and speaking so openly and bluntly.
Yes.
It is not nothing against eastern utilities, and we all know it's a wonderful organization, helping and supporting us. Eastern Utility received $2.1 million from the ARPA fund that was made available to the Town of East. Eastern Utility has other grants coming from USDA.
Okay.
Eastern Utility currently has other projects, projects that's going to be funded by FCC, and there is 64 and a half billion dollars coming from the infrastructure fund and the broadband under the Infrastructure Act, that is going to be divided again in the different parts of the country, about close to $6 billion of it is going to come to the state of Maryland, and the governor is going to be reaching out and, and trying to get that fund available for connecting the unconnected and expanding and extending, especially with the new definition of the broadband, that is not the old definition, it has to meet a certain criteria of speed and bandwidth and the rest. So I, I, I agree with the Councilwoman Price that there's going to be other sources available to this eastern.
Okay, 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 okay.
Or because they got other places to get it from.
Okay, all right, that's, that's fine. Mr. DiVillo, what's your next, what was your next one?
The fully funding of the entrepreneurship.
Okay.
After the entrepreneurship of Iowa.
Okay.
For, that seems like a true economic development, it's nice seeing an organization like that.
Yeah, I got you.
I love the choice of.
How's the committee feel about that?
Well, I would say absolutely, because this is, to me, you're gonna take a big swing, and if you hit it, you're gonna hit big. There's a letter in their package, you know, from a company that says that they would come here if they built an incubator here.
Yeah.
I'm a hundred percent supportive of this, and think it's one of the most exciting projects on the list.
State of Indiana, yeah, I'm sorry. State of Indiana, five years ago, started with a similar project, with a similar magnitude. It is now multi-billion dollar initiative for the entire state. So this is ag biotech, it's gonna be a very, very important element of our economic development, not only for our community and for our state, but throughout the country, and for that matter, even on the international market. So this is gonna be an area that is in the sweet spot of what we, as the eastern shore of Maryland, we need to focus on, I believe, that makes a lot of sense with Congressman DeVille supporting it.
Okay, great, great.
Is that a one hundred thousand?
That's a one hundred thousand.
In addition to the four hundred.
Yes, so that would fully fund their request of five hundred.
Yep. Okay, Mr. DeVille, did you have another one? What was your next one?
The, so I was gonna do the remaining amount, the one eighty-eight seven hundred at the Marriott Hotel Museum, but before we do that, if they leave the river later, let's go next to Classic Car.
Okay, yeah, let's go to Classic Car.
So first of all, thank you all very much for letting me come and
Absolutely.
Bring you up to date.
Yes, sir.
We're all about, what we're promoting here is all about jobs, and I think Frank brought it up about jobs, you're talking about trapping all these houses.
Right.
What we have created, and it was accepted May tenth by the Department of Labor, is Automotive Technician Apprenticeship Program. It's ready to go today. We're in the absolute beginning stages of trying to raise the money to get the program off the ground.
Okay.
We've got six local shops, Talbot County shops, that are willing to apprentice these people. One of the interesting things about the program, unlike a college, the apprentice will be paid during their job at a different shop. They will get fifty percent of the journeyman's wage first year. They pass the two thousand hour shop time, and they pass the test for that year. The next year, they'll get seventy-five percent of the journeyman's wage, and after the third year, they become a full auto technician, they're in a position to earn between eighty and a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. So these are jobs we're trying to create that allows people to actually live here, raise their children, raise a family.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I can talk to you all day about it, but
Well, that's what it's about.
That's what it's about. We would really like to have something.
Okay.
We asked for three fourteen, but any piece will help us get it off the ground.
Yeah.
And I'll ask any questions, I mean, I'm fine with questions.
Okay.
In terms of, of the qualifications for completers of the program, how does it, how does it compare to the Automotive Technology Program at Easton High School?
Easton High School's auto tech program is defunct. They don't have a teacher. They can't get a teacher, so we're gonna piggyback on using some of their shop time, but the way this works, the way it's set up, and it was approved by the Department of Labor, is that two thousand hours a year is the time you spent on a shop floor. We've got Bay Hundred Automotive, Bay Hundred in on it, we've got Bridges in on it, we got Dede Smith in on it, we got Harrison's in on it, we got Elliot's in on it. These are all shops that are willing to take on a apprentice. So they have two thousand hours of shop time and a hundred and sixty hours of classroom time every year. They will be paid for the classroom time by the shop. We are raising money to buy them tools, so when you become an auto tech, you have to have your own toolbox. Toolbox is anywhere from sixty-five hundred to ten thousand dollars. Different than a plumber, or an HVAC, or electrician, their tools are significantly less. The other thing interesting about the program is auto techs aren't licensed. All the other apprenticeship programs are licensed, electricity, plumbing, HVAC, elevators, they're all licensed. So this makes, this makes this different. You also notice if you look at the shops around Easton, and, you know, we're reaching out to all three counties, the average age is in the mid-fifties, so there's nobody coming along behind. We're looking at vets, we're looking at schools, we're looking at all sorts of different places to entice people to do this. And the enticement is, they get paid. If you go to college, you have to pay. But this program, you are paid a piece of the journeyman's wage as you go through it, which makes it completely different.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
I'll ask the question after you communicate it.
Absolutely.
Go for it.
So you have a three-year apprenticeship.
It's, it's two thousand hours a year, six thousand hours. However, if you come into the apprenticeship with some background in mechanics, you can start skipping.
Okay.
Okay, all you have to do is keep passing the classes, so you don't have to take the whole thing, but you get credit for whatever the increments are that you already understand. And there's, you know, there's front-end alignment, there's oil changes, there's, you know, electric, there's air conditioners, and now, one of the things is, all these applicants have got to learn the computers, so we've got to get them a computer, we've got to get them a toolbox, with all these pieces of puzzle.
So one of the questions that we ask the applicants that we didn't fully fund, is there an amount that would be the most helpful if we don't fully fund your?
We would be tickled with anything, because, I mean, we asked for sort of our maximum.
Right.
But half of that would be terrific, because we need to start. We have a time limit with the Department of Labor, is two years, to get the thing done.
And is there funding through the Department of Labor to help augment this?
For different pieces.
Okay.
Different pieces, and it's a continual process, but so far, we haven't landed it. You're our best hope.
Well, I promised Jan that I would help get the rest of the funding, so, you know, we had a, particularly had one committee member who was very engaged with this project and wanted to fully fund it. You know, we're not opposed to this in any way, but those were the questions we had, and I wanted to ask you while you were here.
Perfect.
Well, that's, that's great, I appreciate it. So, go ahead, Mr. DeVille, what was your proposal? Remind me.
He had a hundred and eighty thousand left, and we'd be happy for it.
Did you hear me, Frank?
Yeah, I did, but we have more than a hundred and eighty thousand left, because we did, we're not doing the two hundred K for, for eastern utilities because of all the other funding sources, so we've got, we've got money.
Three thousand seven hundred.
Right.
You guys, I think it's three fifteen is what you're looking for?
That's what we asked for, yes, sir.
Okay, and how many students have, at a time, will you be able to have a program?
At the, at present, if we had six, we would have one apprentice in each of the shops that have currently signed up.
Okay.
One of the things that makes this different is, because the museum is a sponsor, we're the sponsor of each apprentice at each shop, which means we're in charge of the testing, the recording of the testing, and, you know, weekly or bi-weekly inspections of each applicant at each shop and the hours they do, because we have to justify this back to the Department of Labor. So there's a, there's a pretty healthy pile of paperwork that follows each student.
Okay.
And the expected outcome of your, of our investment here would be graduates, would it be funding the toolboxes?
We're, we're raising money now for the toolboxes, I mean, hopefully, I mean, Glenn the plumber, he wants to help with the toolboxes. The best answer, because it's, it's a new program, is that if we got an apprentice, they completed the course in a year and a half to two years, not to three, and they went to work at the shop that took them on.
And how many apprentices do you have signed up or interested now?
The apprentices, that's where we're working.
We're working on recruiting those.
We got the shops, we got interest in funding the tools, but we need the money to establish website, we need the money to establish the the mechanical parts of being a sponsorship.
Right.
Okay.
Which is no small feat, so thank you very much for.
Yes, sir, I appreciate everything you're doing too, to all these, with the young men and young ladies, yeah.
I'm not here tonight as a commissioner, but one thing I would say as a commissioner, we got a pretty strong team now getting the electric lines off of Talbot Street.
That's good, that's good. Okay, well, thank you. So let's, let's, go ahead, Mr. Lesher.
So my question, my question for the committee is, in your initial scoring, this was the third or fourth lowest ranked project. That presumably was at least in part because of some of the unanswered questions. I'd love to hear feedback from you on, on, on the committee's thoughts on this.
We have the representative of the Department of Labor, State of Maryland Department of Labor, who covers the eastern shore, and he was our speaker at the Rotary Club. And he explained the apprenticeship program in very detail, and of course, I'm glad that we heard from Mr. Dupont, that it is that. But the problem at six thousand hours, it's a three-year program, it is not a two-year program. With all the respect, and with all the things that we know we put in place, it is not gonna be adequate for us to be able to provide the funding and not being able to deliver any results that the fund is expecting, the graduates, that they're coming out of the program in two years. There's no way that you can cut a six thousand hour program in two years. It might be two and a half years, two years and three months, or four months, I don't wanna go in the weeds, but that was one of the big limitations. The second point that he brought up to us was, there's a lot of fund now available from the Department of Labor. Apprenticeship, apprentices receive a very, very strong support from the current administration, Biden administration, as well as the Hogan administration, so there's gonna be more funding coming up, and that fund is gonna be available to them as well, too. I'm not, please don't get me wrong, I'm not against the program, but I'm just saying that in terms of compliance and in terms of fitting the framework, it may not fit the framework, and just a potential partial funding might help just to get this thing started, because it seemed to be a very, very startup operation.
Thank you. I would, I would agree with your assessment, rather than what I was just reading. I think the requirements are very stringent, as a three-hour, three-hour apprenticeship, three-year apprenticeship, not three hours, three years, doesn't fit within the timeframes of the application, and I could certainly understand why the committee did not fund this.
And that really was.
Yeah, it doesn't fit.
However, you know, this is my personal opinion, you know, some funding to get them started with their marketing efforts to begin recruiting would not be a miss.
Okay, sure, thank you. So.
So you had asked, you had asked that question of him before, so if that's the direction that we're going as far as licensing money, startup money, and we can't really do this for your apprenticeship program, what amount of money is correct for that, what is helpful for that?
What's helpful, so what would be helpful for you guys for startup money? To get you started, because at three hundred and fifteen thousand, it doesn't really fit the parameters. Oh, can you come on up for a minute? Come on up.
For the marketing, for the website, for the startup, for the recruiting.
You don't even wanna know how much they're gonna charge.
Believe me, I build websites.
Eighty, eighty thousand? I think where we got confused here, you're saying it's not gonna fit because it's a three-year program.
Okay.
It is a three-year program if you go by definition, but the way that it reads is if anybody passes the courses ahead of schedule, like, if I wanted to take this apprentice course, I've got background in mechanics, so I'm not gonna start at zero. I'm gonna start somewhere up the line, and you get credit for that, and so anybody that's really interested in becoming an auto tech for life probably has some abilities already in their pockets.
Yes, sir.
Chances of zero to six thousand, straight line, is pretty small, or at least that's what's been explained to me.
Right, okay.
Yeah, Cassandra's right, the recruiting, the marketing, the website, those are all the initial stages.
Yes, sir, okay. So hearing that, counsel, how does counsel feel? Did somebody say something?
Frank, I think so.
For easy math, these are going, how about eighty-eight thousand seven hundred?
I was thinking of easy math at a hundred thousand.
Somebody's gonna have to have uneven.
Well, we'll give it to some even, you know? So how's everybody feel like, given a hundred grand?
Well, I'm not, I won't, I won't support that, it's not justifiable.
What number is?
Well, he just, he said eighty, he's, I mean, and he's saying that that's off the cuff, but, you know, this is an application process, and, you know, you'd have to show how much is the website design, have you gone out and looked at, or taken bids from certain designers to find out if eighty would cover that. So as much as you, as much as we wanna support this, you know, let's just be brutally honest, it doesn't fit the criteria of the application, it just doesn't.
It fits the job.
It does, it does fit the job, but you have a three-year requirement to go through, you can say, well, you get a guy to come in, he may have some experience, and he can do it in twenty-four months. Yeah, that, that could be, but it's a could be.
Well, you were talking about something I trapped that.
Well, we're not talking about trap, we're not talking about trap, well, we're not talking about trap, we're talking about your project. So, so what I'm, what I'm saying is that if there were a breakdown on the startup costs as far as the avatar, you don't have the website design yet, do you or don't you, for this? So you don't even have the website design, so you don't know the cost of that, so you don't know.
That's part of their application.
It's not realistic. So if that was, if that breakdown was here, we could see, is it seventy, is it seventy-five, I may be willing to go with that, but I can't support that just because it feels good, I just can't. You have three hundred, if you go the way Mr. DeVille was walking us down this path, you got three hundred eighty-eight thousand seven hundred left over. I would still like to see a good portion of funding go to the St. Michael's Maritime Museum, their request was five hundred thousand dollars. If you give them three hundred thousand dollars of their request, you've made more than halfway of their request. The other eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars, if Mr. Dupont can show us some documentation of what that startup would be, then that might be more reasonable. Eighty-eight seven, right.
And it doesn't have to be more than.
And that way we can end our night without going to nine o'clock.
Go, go ahead, Mr. DeVille.
I'm just saying, it doesn't have to, this is all startup, you know, they're trying to add startup projects, and continue to create revenue and income down the road. So I, we could, we could fund the startup just because it's not, we're not gonna, you know, keep funding it year after year after year. So it would kind of, and I'm just gonna take this one quick second to point out how much I appreciate the whole work for who went through this, clearly, these were difficult decisions, a lot of information's in the application, that I I greatly appreciate those who've given us this information. Clearly shows how challenging this is and how much work you did.
So before we, there's one more project that I wanted to hear about before we were finalizing this, and that was one that scored, I think, third, or we're going to declare an incubator program, because we kind of have a theme, though, there are these incubators and whatnot, and that's were very, very high, and they got no funding. If you're, that was for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Can I get a little more insight on that?
Mr. Dupont, you can probably stop back there and let Ressa come up, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, Clarant proposed a tech incubator. Ressa may have additional information about this as well, and we were all really excited about this program. They would be investing in technology companies in the medical space. But when the application came in, there was very little detail about how the program would be set up, and while we all really wanted that to be a winner, at the end of the day, that was the deciding factor.
Yes, and I had a long conversation, almost about an hour and a half, with the CEO of Clarant, as a part of the Zoom, and there were a couple of other people in there just maintaining their privacy. I would not be in a position of disclosing who they were, but it's a long conversation. At the end of that conversation, it was very, very clear that this is gonna be an investment for supporting Clarant and Clarant initiatives. As a matter of fact, two weeks after that conversation, Clarant formed another entity, which is wonderful, and I'm very much in support of it, for-profit organization, sitting on the side, under the umbrella. sitting on the side under the umbrella, non-for-profit Clarant. And now the for-profit is going to be responsible for running this program. And the for-profit part and the fact that there's going to be an investment from the venture, it's called Clarant Ventures, is going to be made on this. And they made them almost like disqualified because it was not for us to fund somebody's, uh, a, a for-profit startup. Because if we wanted to open that gate, then we would be putting ourselves into non-compliance with the requirements of the fund.
Absolutely. I would agree. Okay. Yep, I would agree too.
However, I will, I want to say what an important business Clarant is to our community. If you missed the story that I did on them, you should go back and read it because they employ more than five hundred fraud investigators all around the country. They even have someone living in Montana teleworking for them. They have ninety-plus I T professionals, uh, making it possible for doctors and lawyers and pharmacists and investigators all over the country to investigate fraud in Medicare. Uh, they're the only company to ever investigate Part C and D. They are a phenomenal employer in our community. And we fully support them. It's just that when we had to make a decision.
Absolutely. This does not fit the criteria. Again, wonderful company.
This was a heartbreaker.
Absolutely.
So can I, can I make, uh, for the, for, for sake of time, can I make a, a suggestion again on the balance of this three-eight-eight-seven? Um, if we, could we, could we agree to give the St. Michael's Maritime Museum three hundred thousand dollars of their five hundred thousand? And that leaves you eighty-eight thousand seven hundred remaining if you wanted to either do Mr. Dupont's startup or another smaller project.
If we're going to discuss this, I'd like to recuse myself and leave the room.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Well, Pete, Pete, before you go, um, what was, what was the second part of that story?
That would leave you eighty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars remaining if you had any other smaller projects that you wanted to fund that would allow you to do so. But if you were to take the three hundred thousand dollars remaining of this, um, breakdown and give it to St. Michael's Maritime Museum, you're meeting half of their, uh, request of five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
So do you want, do you want to address the second part of that?
The eighty, the eight-eight-seven? I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't have anything that I, that jump out at me. Again, I guess you guys, you guys had some interest in Mr. Dupont's startup. If he, if he has some concrete numbers that he could offer, you know, maybe that goes towards that. Uh, I, I don't have anything that I would.
How about, how about we apply that to the, uh, eastern shore entrepreneurship where they asked for the five, we gave four.
Right.
So we all.
Correct.
So it is two-eighty-seven.
Well, you already did that. That, that was already accounted for. That was, that was, it came off the top. You already did that.
We agreed that. Someone needs to do some, some magic. They're only going to three years.
No, I mean, you.
Thank you.
You're removing all of the money from the Port Street project, which is, which is, uh, five oh one seven hundred. I think the first thing Frank offered up, if I'm following correctly, was to fully fund the entrepreneurship center of a hundred thousand dollars to bring them up to their request of five hundred thousand dollars. That leaves you four oh one seven hundred remaining. If you do thirteen thousand to Oxford, and it sounds like that was, uh, that met the qualification according to RZA, that will leave you three eight-eight-seven remaining. If you did three hundred thousand to the St. Michael's Maritime Museum, that leaves you eight-eight-seven remaining.
Right.
And I'm not even good at math.
So that's, that's eight-eight-seven. Okay. And then.
And then you were doing something, you were doing something with the Avalon. Were you either eliminating it?
Well, let, let's, 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 well, that's in the other pot. Let's not get into that pot yet. Okay? So we're, okay, if you don't mind. Okay, so, so. Do you, would you, would you like?
I'll excuse myself.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay.
I, I want to keep seeing here as much as we can until.
Well, he keeps wanting to leave.
You, you can call me back.
I'd rather do the marathon as a variant as possible, I guess. I just feel like, because I don't want to see, so look, or maybe not, I don't know.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we walk out the door, let's take the phone on the marathon and come right back?
There you go. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
I was, I was getting ready to say the same thing.
Yeah, let's, let's not overthink this.
Yeah, well, it's not overthinking because we're really, I see we were getting ready to.
Yes, we were. Yes, we were. Let's swim out a little deeper.
Oh, exactly.
Room is clear.
Room is clear. Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. De Velle. What's on your mind?
Well, my, again, it's the three hundred thousand dollars. Do we want to give three hundred thousand dollars to St. Michael's Maritime Museum? That, well, so we can bring Pete back in. Is that, is that agreeable?
Can we take the phone on three hundred thousand so Pete can come back?
Yeah, that, is that, yes.
You good, Ms. Price? Good. We're all good.
We're all good. Okay. Bring Pete back in. So you got, so you got eighty-eight seven, eighty-seven left over.
Yep, we got eighty-eight left over. Um.
Right.
Do we want to, do we want to go ahead, um, Mr. Villio, and give that startup money to the museum?
What?
Do we want to give the rest of that money for startup for the museum?
For the car.
For the car museum.
Yeah, I would do that.
Okay.
I would too, as long as, as long as it fits and Cassandra and Rob can pass muster with commerce.
Okay. 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 So.
RZA, you, what do you feel about that?
I, I was going to suggest giving fifty thousand because there are, might, might be a couple of other smaller projects after you look at it.
Yes, sir.
Just at the discretion of the council. Again, this is just a suggestion. Just for the starting of the website and that, that things that might be.
Yes, sir. Okay, so we'll, we'll.
Do we want also to pick a contingent project or a contingent allocation if that is, uh, doesn't pass the compliance review by Metro Regional Council?
On Friday.
Yeah, we can, I can bring that up.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I can, I can bring that to their attention.
It could be, it could be an allocation that would more fully fund one of the other projects that we've only partially funded here.
We're going to go all through this.
This would be all at your discretion, moving line items, yes.
Right. Okay. All right.
We also have not, we have not fully funded, um, the culvert, so we have a little bit of a flush fund left there, but we can always.
So, so fifty thousand is what you're going to do for the automobile?
Yes, sir. Uh-huh. And, and the other, and the other thirty-eight. That'd leave thirty-eight. So do we, do we want to, I'm thinking out loud. Do we want to dump that thirty-eight into like, um, another, um, person that might need that? Or do we?
Thirty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars.
Would we like to dump that into, um, actually?
I'm making a pitch for the visitor center feasibility study. Since people are pitching tonight.
Yep.
All right, let's do that. That's, that's, you only need twenty-five for that though, right? No, you need fifty. Okay, you need fifty. So let's go, let's go and give the eight, thirty-eight seven to the study. How about that?
That's great.
There you go.
That's great.
What is, what you're going to?
That's great.
To the, to the feasibility study for the visitor center, it was, the request was fifty. So if we use that last eighty-eight seven to that, that gets them more than halfway. Yeah, it gets them more than halfway there for that.
Take you to zero on that pot.
There you go.
Okay, there you go.
Well done.
Okay, now we got one more pot. Okay. We got five hundred. Okay.
Make it real simple.
Okay, let's, 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 let's hear a couple of proposals.
Well, I would propose very simple, so it won't be dragging us out. I mean, the town of Trap seems prepared to, um, to move forward with this. Uh, can certainly be done. We, we heard from, from Lindsay that can be done within the, the two-year timeframe. That question's off the table. And they are coming to the table with their own money. They're saying we have eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars in our sewer fund. We have an additional nine hundred and forty thousand dollars in our fund. Our five hundred thousand dollars will help gift them more than halfway on getting this project completed and done. Um, not only is it an act of goodwill, it's working with Incorporated Town. Uh, I think it is the only project coming out of that, that region of the county. Um, it also will serve, uh, county residents in the future and businesses in the future. Let me add that. In the Ferry Point area, which we all have been supporting over the last, uh, four years of this, of this, uh, this council's term. Um, and it's a step, as, as I said earlier, it is a step in a multi-step, um, process. So, um, to make this clean, so we want to go through parsing it out, um, I would recommend just moving the entire five hundred thousand dollars from the, from the, to Soltz Pavilion as much as I support the Avalon Foundation in moving it over to, uh, help out with the Waste Water Treatment Plan update, uh, in the town of Trap.
Question for the committee. Um, did you, did you speak with Avalon about what they might be able to do with partial funding? Or was that because you were looking at, uh, at full funding of the request? Did you not ask that question?
Oh, we did ask that question because we originally recommended two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, for them in partial funding. And I have it in writing from Mr. Bond that, uh, what they need is what they ask for is five hundred thousand. So, um, my recommendation would be that if you put the Trap project in, uh, that you would put this one in as an alternate in case it's, um, um, kicked back from commerce for any reason.
So Avalon Foundation indicated that, that partial funding would not be helpful to them?
Right.
So we'll leave the, uh, we'll leave the Avalon Foundation as a catch-all in case, in case the, the Trap project doesn't get approved.
That would be my recommendation, if you choose to fund the Trap project. And by the way, for the record, I did ask if we wanted to fund Ferry Point, but I didn't get an application for that. So, same.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
I have this back recommendation. I, I think, like we said, we know Brooke is coming there. We know that we have an infrastructure issue to take care of. Um, I, I would put, I would put clean that off and making it more successful. If you're going to have businesses come, you've got to have electricity, clean water, sewer, and broadband. So they have the space for all of that. They are just missing one piece.
Okay. Okay.
Support Trap first.
Okay. Okay.
And if I may.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, RZA.
I, I will support the proposal that has been submitted for your approval by Cassandra as well, too. And one thing that is going to be very, very important, and that goes back to the explanation that came from Lindsay and from, uh, Councilman Pat. And that is when these funds are being recommended through you tomorrow, when you sit in, in that kind of a different capacity, they all have to be turned into a form of a grant. It is not going to be just, we are giving you a project and there's going to be a lot more information coming to make sure that it's going to be in compliance with what the fund is going to be. Otherwise, Commerce is not going to be providing that fund. Unfortunately, we would be missing the opportunity.
Right.
So my request and recommendation is if we can make sure that every piece of information that you provided tonight and, and the town of Trap provided are being made available to SCOT. So when they provide those grants, that's going to be, and the idea of if they, for whatever reason, did not meet the criteria, you have now a backup that is going to be.
Yes, sir.
We are representatives from the town of Trap right here tonight. I'm sure they're going to give you everything that you need.
So we're going to need an amended application by tomorrow. But I'll call Aaron in the morning.
Yeah, okay.
I will take care.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Ms. Price?
That's, that's good. Um, is only one third that we didn't talk about at all.
There was a what now? What was it?
Another project.
Okay.
And that was the collaborative workspace with the Chamber of Commerce. Is there any reason to touch on that at all?
RZA?
Yes.
Well, we got, we got to make sure now we're, we're, we're out of money.
Wait, pause. Uh, before we make this final, the five hundred thousand.
Okay, okay.
Ways where to shoot. I mean, I don't know that people, especially now that, you know, we've done such a, uh, broadband's getting out there, people who work from home and all of that. I don't know if people are really going to a collaborative workspace anymore, you know, to get access to that. Maybe it's just kind of an idea of, you know, hotspots or whatever they were, you know, ten years ago, if, if that's why it did, or I see level of funding that.
That is the reason.
Yeah, they, they are coming back, uh, Councilman Price. And, and that is because, again, especially communities like ours, that people do not want to drive two hours or three hours, either going to Baltimore or to Annapolis or going to Salisbury. Those locations are available now. It is not only for startups, even for people who wanted to use these facilities for the, for the, for the lack of better words, to help the environment as well as their pocket goal to be able to be closer to home and, and do the work. I, I spoke with Amy Kryner, the President of the Chamber of Commerce. It looks like they, they are still interested in that project. But they also requested a fund from ARPA for the non-for-profits. So there might be other sources of fund available to them, so we can provide the support to them.
Okay.
And in the interest of fairness.
Yep.
Ms. Price, or do we satisfy your question?
Yes, no, I'm just saying, since we've really discussed with all the rest of the committees.
Sure. No problem.
I mean, once the two or three people talked, they didn't look like they were ever part of discussion.
Right. That's good.
So, or the list would be as well.
Right. And so in the interest of fairness. Yes.
We did not discuss the Waterfowl project. I'm not advocating for it. I'm just saying we haven't discussed it.
Okay, well, let's discuss it.
So they were, um, requesting, um, money for the roof restoration. Um, they have a larger plan to, um, remake that space into more of a usable space for community, uh, meetings and of course for their own needs. It's the Waterfowl Festival. But I'm just bringing that to your attention.
Okay.
And then the one other thing is the Upper Shore Workforce Investment Board, their incumbent worker training fund. They really didn't come in in time, but, um, you know, we're not opposed to that one either. I'm just letting you know that it's, it's on the list. And then there was the, the ferry, um, project, um, the passenger ferry. Uh, we have an obligation to, for twenty-five thousand dollars for a match to that. We're a partner to Anne Arundel County. I really put that on there only for information purposes, for the EDC and for everyone to understand that, that, uh, all of the partners on the Chesapeake Bay are working on that. So. And then there was Channel Markers Residential Crisis Service Center. And we really, uh, determined that that, uh, did not qualify, unfortunately, because, um, it has an economic impact, but it is not economic development. Also, they're going to open in September. And, um, this is, money is, can't be used for past things. It's for forward things. So we disqualified them. And, um, I just wanted to bring all of the projects forward.
Yep. Yep, thank you. Okay. All right. So, um.
Are we?
Yeah, go.
There you go.
I, I, I can hear you.
He said something about happy hour.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yep. Is everybody good with Trap?
Yes.
So I, I'm, I'm concerned about the trade-off. I do, I do like to fund clean water. And this is an important clean water, uh, piece. Uh, and, and Trap has now told us that, that even though the Foley and our upgrade can't happen for five years, that, uh, it's a longer timeframe than is allowed under this, that there's at least a piece of this that, that they can.
Right.
And so I, I, I understand that, that we can now see that this is qualifying. That's, that's, that's really important, that, that we'd be able to move that, that forward. I just hate to see this coming at the expense of the Avalon Foundation. I, I, I'm really, I'm really concerned about losing that opportunity. I, I think that that's, uh, we saw what an important force that could be, uh, during the pandemic. And, and now to see this as, uh, effectively an expansion of this, of this very successful anchor in our downtown. There's no question the, uh, the stimulating effect, uh, the economic impact, uh, that, that this will have. And I, I just, I, I, if there's a way of doing this that, uh, that doesn't come at the expense of the, uh, the Avalon Foundation's project, I would, I would prefer to see us go that route.
I would, I would ask Al, um, a question if you could come up here, Al. Yep, if you don't mind. So, so there was a, a bunch of discussion before you come about the Avalon.
I, um.
Yeah.
Got to hear a little bit of it.
Yeah, I got you. I got you. So, so, so help me out. So, in, in a simple way, with, with the way you guys are operating with the five hundred thousand.
Sure.
So, so if, if you don't get the full funding of the five hundred, that doesn't help you giving you a hundred or two hundred thousand? So can you explain that?
So, the Avalon Foundation has limited capacity to raise money and limited resources as every other nonprofit working in our community does. And, you know, when we look at the, you know, the projects that we are working on, this project really does not, is not viable if we are not able to, and essentially our plan is we have, you know, we believe that we can successfully do fundraising for about five hundred thousand dollars of our one-point-five million dollar project. We believe that we can allocate a half a million dollars of our existing cash towards this project. And then there's this grant. And the timing of it is such that, yeah, it came at an incredibly, you know, good time. And, you know, I do not see other sources for it that are going to get us across the finish line. You know, I've had extensive conversations with our strategic planning committee or finance committee, like, I, I, I'm not giving you a final, final for beyond anything, but I strongly believe that we will turn down a grant that is, you know, partial I'm not giving you a final, final for beyond anything, but I strongly believe that we will turn down a grant that is, you know, partial and not do the pavilion. But you should understand that this is us saying that we're not gonna do the pavilion if we can't work it through. That's the choice that you've got. You know, I wish it were other. I, I've been a straight shooter with you guys through many, many years. Like I'm telling you what it is, and I am absolutely loathe to be talking about not accepting what is potentially, you know, still a huge amount of money. But that's where I am. And, you know, the other piece that I just, as long as we're doing advocacy here, I didn't realize that it was gonna be this kind of a workshop session. But, um, this is truly an additive pro- project. Like we are creating essentially a new business that is a, you know, happening in downtown Easton that would draw tourism, you know, to our community. You know, about half of the people that buy tickets from the Avalon are coming from outside the two-one-six zip code. So those are people who are coming in, they're buying restaurant meals, they're staying at the Tidewater and other hotels, you know, around town. They're, they're creating a lot of economic activity outside of our direct ones. We hire a lot of contract workers that are both tech workers and artists. And many of those people live in this community, too. So there's that kind of economic activity. But I think maybe in a lot of ways, the biggest impact is when you create a stable draw in a, in an area. And if you think about that northern block of the downtown, you're talking about a wildly underutilized commercial area in terms of the, you know, intensity of programming there. And we believe that the Stoltz Pavilion could be really transformative in terms of making the connection from that, you know, at the northern end of the, the downtown all the way down through to connect down to the, the sort of commercial core that people think of right outside these doors. So, you know, there's layers to why this is an economic development project as opposed to have a project that has economic impact. Yeah, this is a new venture, even though we did a trial balloon of it before. This is not, you know, something that, you know, this would be additive to the work of the Avalon Foundation and has a pretty clear set of connectors in terms of how it would, um, impact our community. So.
Okay.
Um, I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you, Al.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Mr. President, if I can just ask.
Yes.
A couple of other points. The, the definition that we've been discussing and the framework that we've been discussing it in force, Cassandra presented it on Tuesday as well. Creation of equality of life for businesses to, to make our county attractive for businesses to come in, bring their employees in, bring again, people who would be working for those organizations, extend and expand their business and retain their business. That's gonna be a very, very important element of the economic development. So it is not that, again, we cannot just kind of separate the art and culture from the economic development because that part really impacts the attraction part of the economic development.
Yep.
That the, Mr. Pack also co- covered this as well. So it is an economic development, no matter how you look at it.
And I would also say, you wanna feel good about giving money away, but at the end of the day, at the end of this, you might wanna go home and lay down and cry.
I know it, I, I hear you. So I do, I do, I, I hear you. Um, and, and I'm, I'm a little bit, uh, you know, partial to the Avalon, too. I mean, and I hear Al, and, and they do phenomenal things, and, and I hear, um, Mr. Lesher. Does, does, does council have any appetite of, um, maybe pulling a little bit out of the, the Talbot roads of the seven-fifty? And, um, maybe, maybe, uh, splitting that up a little bit? Um, and maybe taking a little bit from, um, Parks and Rec to get them to their five-hundred? I'm just asking, I'm just, we got, we've got, we've got a million bucks, we've got a.
Why don't we, let's, let's, let's build on what you're saying. Let's pull enough from Trap, from, uh, uh, the, the road and from, what was the last one you said?
Um, Parks and Rec.
No, not Parks, Frederick Douglass.
Oh, Fred, yeah, Frederick Douglass, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Frederick Douglass.
So Frederick Douglass, three hundred is your number.
Do what now?
For me?
So three hundred is your number on Frederick Douglass?
Okay.
Cause you already cut it from seven-fifty to three.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
You can take it all, but you can't take some of it.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, I got you.
You're not, you're not gonna find five-hundred, I mean, you can do it, we had this all night long, Mr. De, Mr. Callahan. And, and it's, it's, as well-deserving as Avalon is, unfortunately, you, I mean, you can grab a piece of this, he needs five-hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
And it's just not there. When you look at the, um, the totality of the other projects that we, that we had the chance to look at. We've, we've gone through this, and I think we've, we've put a fairly good amount of time and effort into it. Um, it doesn't mean that perhaps the Avalon can't raise the funds and find some other way of making up the five-hundred thousand dollars. Uh, I think we've all been supporters of the Avalon, uh, over the years. We still support the members of council, um, through our, our, um, our franchise, uh, uh, fees. Um, and we've supported many, many of the Avalon, Avalon's requests over the years, uh, when it comes to, um, outdoor liquor license. I think we supported that, we wrote new legislation for it. So sometimes, sometimes as difficult as it is, you just can't do it.
Yeah.
You just can't do it.
Yep.
And again, this just goes to show how difficult this decision was.
Absolutely.
This great board that put this together for us.
Okay.
I can't thank them enough.
Yep, I can't either.
For research they did, to come up with these recommendations, what it's out.
Right, okay.
And I don't, you know, I certainly don't want anybody to feel like, oh, I, I guess we did kind of turn upside down today. And, but I don't want any of the committee to think that it's not because we didn't completely respect, um, the process that they went through. But we also come at it from a little bit different perspective, from being elected, from dealing with, you know, with budgets and having to allocate stuff, and we do this each and every year. So, so our, our questions are a little different, and different questions are gonna bring out a slightly different result. But generally, you know, we, we agree with everything the committee did. It's not that we did it, you know, that we disagreed, it was just a couple of things that we wanted to throw in here and all. So, um, obviously much appreciated, um, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Where everybody collaborated together.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Lesher, final words?
I'll, I'll add my thanks to the committee that, um, for, for taking the, the deep dive into this and, and doing all the analysis and the follow-up questions to all these organizations. And, um, thank you for your, your considerable efforts here. And, uh, and while, while this council has, uh, proposed some changes to those recommendations, it really is substantially, um, as put forward by the, by the committee. Uh, and, um, appreciate, uh, all that work.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
On behalf of the Economic Development Commission, I, I feel compelled to thank each and every one of you for all you do for our community and all your hard work and all the effort that you spend, not only tonight or on Tuesday night, but each and every day. Thank you very much.
Yep.
With gratitude, thank you.
Madam Secretary, could you kind of read back, um, sort of what we did?
Yes.
Um, and, and that way we can, you know, that'd be great.
I'd love to do that. I'm, I'm coming up fifty thousand over, and, um, so I, I would like to make sure of that.
Okay.
Okay, so here we go.
Here we go.
Frank, are you ready? Cause you're, cause you're tracking as well.
Okay.
Okay, for the first, first issue, let's talk about the removal of the Port Street Improvement Project at five-hundred-and-one-thousand-seven-hundred dollars. Okay, that's been removed, that money is available. The first addition by council was a hundred thousand dollars for Eastern Shore Entrepreneurial Ship to fully fund it at five-hundred thousand dollars. The second is to add thirteen thousand dollars to Oxford Community Center. The third item is to add three-hundred thousand dollars to Chesapeake Bay Museum. The fourth item is to add fifty thousand dollars to the Classic Car Museum. The, and the fifth and final was to add thirty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars for a Talbot County Economic Development Feasibility Study for a total of five-hundred-one-thousand-seven-hundred dollars. Is that what everyone has for that first pot?
Uh, I.
Bless you.
Did you say five-oh-one-seven-hundred?
I said five-oh-one-seven-hundred, correct.
Okay.
Okay, so that adds up.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it does, right.
Right, okay, so staff has that. The second pot, uh, of money that you were talking about was originally allocated or referred to the council for the Avalon Foundation project at five-hundred thousand. You've decided to move that to an alternate proj- project, uh, and to allocate primary to the Trap E and R wastewater treatment plan upgrade. Again, if something fails with that project from a compliance perspective, your alternate is the Avalon Foundation project of five-hundred thousand.
Mrs. Morris, where are you coming up with the fifty thousand dollar overage?
I don't know.
We'll work it out in the morning.
We'll work it out in the morning.
Okay. Yeah, you're right.
Okay.
As long as, when I read back, everybody is shaking their head, yes.
That's what I have in mind, in my list, too.
It balances out.
Okay, it's all right. All right, then.
Frank, you look at.
I'm, I'm good, um, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. All right, well, we, like, like, like colleagues said, we can't thank you enough for all the work you've done. Um, the Midshore Regional Council, my work's getting ready to begin.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm taking it to another level here. So, you know, I just really wanna make sure that the council and, and the committee understand the whole intent. You know, cause I was in there when this was taking place, before anybody knew that this ten million dollars was gonna come to us. So we had, you know, that meeting, and it was a very, very good meeting. And, you know, we all sort of voted, and we had a lot of people in there, to, to split this up to three counties. So, you know, I had a, a big voice in that. So I feel very proud to be able to bring that three million dollars to Talbot in the development process. And, you know, for you guys, you know, cause I knew it was gonna add some work to us. I knew it was gonna add a little bit of sort of somewhat stress to us. But, you know, at, at the end of the day, okay, we're, we're looking out for Talbot County and all the businesses and all the people we wanna hire, all the people we want to come here. So I just don't wanna lose sight on really what it's intended to do. Cause we could've very well had nothing other than a, a global project. And I didn't really think a global project, so to speak, was really the way to go. So.
Frank, you did, I'm sorry, I, I do apologize.
Yeah.
You didn't mention the fifty thousand dollars that were set aside for the museum, that's what it was.
We did.
You did mention that?
Yeah, he did mention it, yeah, he did mention it.
Then the numbers are right.
So being that said, council, I can't thank you enough for working together for this. Um, and, and, um, you know, the public out here helping us, Al, I really appreciate it. Um, and, and hopefully, um, we can help you in the future, that's for sure. So, um, being that said, I think we're, Madam Secretary, do we need to sort of go out of the, the meeting?
We're still adding. Are you still fifty over?
I'm still fifty.
Okay. All right.
And.
Do you wanna?
We, we, uh, we have, we have a, we have a contingency, uh, a compliance contingency resting on the Trap project. Were we explicit about what the contingency is on the Classic Motor Museum project is? There was some discussion about whether or not that might meet compliance and whether we might need to have a, a, a sec, a backup allocation for that or, or any of these other funds. Uh, something that we've partially funded that we.
I, I would propose that if we have anything left over, we allocate it towards that Repulberts Room Project, both of that.
I agree.
Okay, okay, all right, I'll bring that to the committee.
Do, do we? Do we need a motion to, uh, formalize this?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So, again, I, I would, there is funding for, uh, my daytime employer in this, uh, so I will, you've had my input on this.
Yes, yes.
But I would like to, I, I think I should recuse myself.
Okay, no problem.
From this vote for that reason.
Okay, no problem. So, um, council, what we have in front of us is a proposal for the funds that are allocated tonight. And, um, Madam Sec, or could, Madam Secretary, um, is there, is there a motion in a second?
You wanna read more?
Can I, can I just throw one nail in there?
Yeah, yeah, sure, uh-oh.
If, if we, he's gone, right?
Correct.
Yep, he's gone.
If we take back a hundred thousand from entrepreneurship, we take two-hundred thousand from Pete. Get him a hundred thousand, and then we take two-hundred from the call. That's half a million for the Avalon.
I don't have a problem with that.
You, you've cut Chesapeake Bay, you're turning this game down to a hundred thousand from three hundred, are you?
Yeah.
That's a big hit.
That's a very.
To conjure, how much were they initially applying for entry?
Five hundred.
Five hundred.
Five hundred thousand.
Uh, you're only giving a hundred.
Take fifty from Freddie D.
We're gonna cobble it together, too, but, you know.
Now, you look at how much we've given to Easton, the County, St. Michael's, Trap, Pat Fox, or, okay, I'm done. I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion to second it to, uh, to, to fund the proper, uh, programs that the council and the committee have agreed to this evening. Um, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillia?
Aye.
Okay, sounds good, appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Make a motion to adjourn? Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, okay, we got a motion second to adjourn. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Only if they move my chair, I'll slide it out.
Mr. DeVillia?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.